Thank you for being here for your August 17 city council meeting. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Would you please stand with us for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up is roll call. Would you please let us know you are here, council? Thank you. Michelle?
All councillors present in the quorum has been declared.
Thank you. Next up is the agenda approval. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Yeah?
No, sir. Motion passed unanimously.
I didn't hear you.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay.
Okay. On the agenda approval, if there's no other questions on it, I'll make the motion approval as presented.
I'll second.
Got a motion a second on the agenda? Is there any further discussion? Start voting, please.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Next up, we have citizen comment. I believe I have eight cards this evening. If you don't, if you haven't filled out a card, fill one out and give it to our city clerk, please. We will start out with Sherri Valdez. Mrs. Valdez, please approach the podium. Give us your name and your address, if you like. You are, there's a three-minute time limit, I think we all know that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Sherri Valdez and I'm the executive director of the Early Childhood Council in the San Luis Valley. Our office is located here on Main Street at 715 Main. We own the building at 809 Ross Avenue, which used to be a part of the Rocky Mountain Sire Head Start when they were, when they had the school there at Athan Ross, I guess it was. And there was a little house just next to it between Zapata Park and the church. And when the new Rocky Mountain Sire grantee took over, they didn't have a use for that small building, so they gave it to another grantee, which we are an early Head Start grantee in the community. And at that point, we used it for meeting space, for our board meetings and policy council meetings, et cetera. And we renovated it and we were still somewhat connected to the church. And so at that point, in about 2010, we had the water separated between the two buildings. We had a new tap put in by the city. The city really supported us on getting that done quickly. We renovated the building and put in a kitchen. We could do parenting classes there, cooking matters, et cetera. Well, that building has not been used recently. And with the current situation of some preschool children needing a place to receive services, we have talked to Children's Garden about letting them utilize this space in a temporary way for this next year to offer preschool services to 24 young children. And this is their only preschool opportunity as the grantee had made some different decisions on how they were going to run their preschool this year. So there's a couple of different programs, Gingerbread House and the Children's Garden, that are working really hard with other community members to find space for these children. And there's 60 children altogether that would be displaced and not have preschool services starting this fall. And both of those programs are looking at expansion, and so we wanted to give them a temporary home in that place. And licensing has been through the building and has looked at that. And it's a go if we can have a granted special use for that building to loan that to Children's Garden for the sticks fall. And do you have any other questions for me at this point?
Thank you, Sherri.
Is my time limit up?
Mayor, I had a question.
Okay.
This building you're talking about, Sherri, you're talking about about 60 kids in there, right?
No, sir. There are a total of 60 children that would be displaced and not have preschool services. But between the two facilities, Children's Garden and the Gingerbread House at Adam State University campus, they're expanding in a lot of different ways. We're working with Boys and Girls Club temporarily. We're working with the university and what space they have. Children's Garden is able to place some of those children, I understand, and they'll have the details for you. But this is just to serve 24 children, 12 in an AM session and 12 in a PM session.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Counselor Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, if you were to get into this new building, would you be in there temporarily for a year? What's your plan on that?
I'm sorry?
I said if you were granted the opportunity to go into this new building...
So if we were to get the special use permit for this?
Yes.
Okay.
Would you, how long would you be there? Permanently, temporarily, what?
I understand that the need is for the one school year, and that will allow time for the Children's Garden to get, you know, situated, expand as they need to, to serve the children in the future.
Thank you, Sherri.
Okay, thank you.
And I believe we have quite a few others specifically dealing with this issue, so, and we're also having this on our regular agenda, correct?
Yes, sir, but there is not a public hearing, so this would be the appropriate time for them to speak.
Thank you very much, Heather. Okay. We then will move on to Evelyn Fuchs. Evelyn, thank you for being here.
So my name is Evelyn Fuchs. I am the co-executive director of Children's Garden and the finance director of Children's Garden. I want to tell you guys, it's, I think everybody kind of knows that there is this great need for childcare and preschool care here in the valley. Mr. Romero brought up in the other meeting that his concerns were the water, which has been already taken care of and solidified. His other issue was the traffic that it would cause. He's not ready to open his building, but in the, so in the meantime, till he's ready, it wouldn't be an issue because we're only talking maybe 12 cars in the morning and 12 cars at lunchtime and 12 cars in the afternoon at night. And the teachers would be parking in the driveway. If he does get it open, which would be great for the community, there is an alley right behind it and two large gates that we have a bus. We could actually have those kids dropped off at Children's Garden, have them driven over to this, this building, take them down the alley, open those gates, let them in and out of just those gates, and it would be very secure for the children. They wouldn't have to, they wouldn't even be close to the street. It's probably 100, over 100 yards from the street where they would be dropped off. So then the only traffic would, that we would cause would be parents dropping off their kids late or needing to pick them up early. His, the other thing that he stated was that we are, he kept saying that we're not competition. We're not competition to him. I don't think this is about competition. I think this is strictly about us wanting to help these children. This whole endeavor, I've done the dollars. This is not going to make us any money. We're just doing it for the kids. So.
Thank you, Evelyn. Counselor Stefano?
Evelyn, is this, are you tied up with the Children's Garden at Adam State? Are you moving that facility to this facility?
The Children's Garden at Adam State, actually it was Trinidad. What's with Adam State is Gingerbread, the Gingerbread House. Children's Garden used to be with Trinidad until 2011, when Trinidad decided they didn't want it anymore. And a bunch of concerned citizens got together and started Children's Garden on its own as a private entity. It's board-driven, but it is a private entity, and we're a 501(c)(3) company.
And the facility is, it's up to code and ready to be...
We have had the fire department in there. We've had licensing in there. We've had health in there. They've given us a list of very small things, like we need fire extinguishers, things that we knew we would need. But because we didn't know if we were going to get the building, we just haven't spent the money. But they all assured us that as soon as we do these small things, that they will sign off and it will be okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Evelyn. Mr. Chase Howard?
My name is Chase Howard, and I am an Alamosa football player. I'm currently a freshman this year. And my team is fundraising to help with team travels and meals for our team. And these gold cards will help us with those. And they're $20 each. And I was wondering if most of you guys would like to buy some to help fundraise for our Alamosa football team.
That's a very good question. I think you probably should start with our city manager, but, you know, Chase, we normally buy these individually, so you're probably going to have to catch us either after hours or at home or something like, any, any comments on this? Counselor Coleman?
Thank you, Mayor. Chase, I would like to commend you for having enough courage to come up here today and, and talk about the program and the high school. And it's good to see you come up here to talk about the cards that you offer. I'm quite sure they have discounts and things like that that would help a lot of people. What I like about the cards, though, from what I understand, is that most of the businesses are local businesses here, and we have to shop locally to support our businesses. And I appreciate you doing that. And I'm not going to wait until you see me at home. I'll go ahead and buy a card from you right now.
Thank you.
Counselor Stefano?
Jay, I think it's a great program, and I got hit up this morning, so I already bought one because I believe in this program.
Very good. Counselor Hesley?
I was just going to say, as the professor of marketing at Adam State, I think you do a great job of marketing, and I also commend you. It's always great to look at different places that not everybody is looking to try to sell something, so very good job. And as you can see, I bought one.
Thank you.
Very good. And, thank you very much, Chase. Kristin Garcia?
Hello, good evening. My name is Kristin Garcia. I needed my address, you said?
That's optional.
Oh, it's on Harkins Place here in Alamosa. So previously before teaching, I worked for the Early Childhood Council for, I don't know, numerous years, three years at least. I've been on their policy council, have their president. I recently just finished my term with them because I served my three years, and now I'm a board member for Children's Garden. I come tonight, though, to talk about my concerns, not only for the center, but as a parent myself. But during my time at the council with Resource and Referral, my job included answering phone calls and helping families when they would come in and were looking for childcare. And through that time, it was unfortunate that I would constantly be having to tell families, basically giving them a list, and I knew that there was no childcare. And so not only do we need a need for childcare, but like we said, for preschool as well. And so my child will be allowed to move up into a preschool classroom, even though he's three. And if he's allowed to move up, then that allows for private pay parents to be able to move into a mixed age classroom with Ms. Sekh, who's in here tonight. And I was very fortunate that when my oldest son, who's now nine, he was also at Children's Garden with Ms. Sekh, and he was able to go to preschool at three. And when I had first heard this concern, it really bothered me because I started worrying, like, what is, how is Julio going to be kinder-ready because he's not going to go to preschool right at three, whereas Carlos went, and I still see that Carlos struggles in school, and he's still behind, even though he went to preschool, but he still has, you know, so it helps. And not only that, but it helps with the stability of the kid. And I also kind of think maybe because Carlos was here at Head Start and then went here in the afternoon and then went here, but at least Julio will be able to stay with Ms. Sekh in the morning and then go to a preschool classroom, and it's stable. But if not, then I need to think of other options for him. So I'm coming to speak as my own concern and how it will affect him. But like I said, if he's allowed to move into a preschool spot, then we're opening up other spots for private pay parents that they can move into that mixed age classroom. So I really would like you guys to consider the 24 families that will not have childcare when you make your decision tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristin. Appreciate it. Mary Lambert?
Hello, my name's Mary Lambert, and I'm a co-director at Children's Garden. I'm also the executive educational director there. And I did send information to all of you regarding what preschool is about. And so, like Evelyn said, we really could bus these children. Transportation is not an issue. I applied for our license through licensing and was able to get it in 17 days, so we have that. And I just wanted to talk about, it really concerned me about the risk factors. We have a lot of kids in our community that really need preschool. And I, these were the statistics of all the applicants that I have for this coming year. And I also would like to talk to you as a parent. My children were in foster care. They, sorry, I'm a little nervous. Sorry. I'll take a deep breath. And they, they were in foster care. They had, they were, had an abused adult in their home. Their parents did meth and alcohol. They were in foster care. They had frequent locations. They, my children were in six homes. My son was three by the time he came to me, and my little girl was a year and a half. And right now, my, they're doing really well. My son was diagnosed with fetal alcohol syndrome, as well as reactive attachment disorder. And he no longer has reactive attachment disorder because he's attached to us, which is awesome. But he still struggles in school with all the trauma that these kids have. It really affects their upper, upper level reasoning and their higher level reasoning and all that frontal lobe to help them from being impulsive, to help them with social skills, friendship skills, and to help him self-regulate. And so as a parent, my son is still on IEP. He receives, he receives a lot of services, but like I said, he's doing great, but without two years of preschool because he was one of those children that was able to go for two years. So three-year-olds do need three risk factors. And we have a lot of children that have six or more risk factors. And without preschool, he probably would have been held back. And so, so that really does put a strain on schools. It really does. And a lot of the children that, their parents don't have a high school degree. I looked at the applications, and a lot of them haven't even gone to first grade. So parents are children's first teachers. And so they're not getting a lot of academic reading. A lot of these parents can't read. And so we really try to help these children be successful in life.
Thank you, Mary.
Oh, do you have questions? I have one.
I did. I did.
Counselor Stefano, you have a question?
I did. I did. How is this going to be funded? And are people going to be able to afford this program? A lot of people?
Actually, the Colorado preschool program is funded through the Alamosa School District, so these parents don't have to pay for this school, for their children.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Anybody else have a, anyone else? No? We'll move on to Robert Orndolph.
I appreciate the opportunity to be, make a comment this evening. Not here to talk about the early childhood development, but it sounds like it's a good thing. But I'm here to, to give my opinion as far as the marijuana issue that is before the city of Alamosa and the city council. I just want to express my opinion. My opinion would be that council do nothing. The council would not put anything on the ballot. If these folks who want marijuana can get enough signatures for a petition, which is my understanding, the petition is out there, but don't have enough signatures. And, you know, and if they get enough signatures on the ballot, then let us, as a citizenry of Alamosa, either pass it or defeat it. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Ruthie Brown?
She forgot to turn in the card.
The truth is, I was going to make my mom talk for me because I don't like public speaking, but I'm going to be brave today.
Well, thank you for being here. Are you, are you talking for Ruth?
Yeah, I'm her representative.
Thank you for being here. Ruth, you also have five, three minutes.
Okay, cool.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Melissa Burns. I live at 12803 Chamisa Trail in Alamosa County. My daughter's Peyton. She's adorable, and she is four years old. She's going on five. She is one of the students who would be serviced by this new facility if it's allowed to operate. She has had her little quirks over time, but last year while she was attending Children's Garden, we saw just vast improvements. And, you know, I really worry if she's not allowed to go to school this next year and taking that year off before kindergarten, what kind of effects it'll have on my daughter. Not only that, I feel like we're a very blessed family. I feel educated, and I feel like she's, has a lot of things going for her that some of these other, 23 other children do not have and are not, I guess, privy to. So I guess I have concerns over that. The other issue is, I know one of the concerns is traffic. I lived two blocks from this area while it did operate as a Head Start, and there was never traffic issues. So to, I guess, devastate 24 families on a proposed issue if Mr. Romero gets his building going in time, I guess it just doesn't quite make sense to me. And I just ask you to think of those 24 families and what you'd want for your children. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You didn't even have to call me. You know, sometimes you wonder why things are even an issue. This is a good thing that we'll have another facility in our community. I've driven by that corner probably 40,000 times in the last 15 years. I have never, ever been impacted by traffic. I believe Pat Steenberg, I read part of the report, there's tons of places to drop off children. It's a good thing. It's great that Children's Garden is expanding. It's great for our community. It's great for that building that hasn't been used. It's next door to a park, for crying out buckets, what could be wrong with that? I would like to see them granted the permitted use with no restrictions because we all know what can happen in a year. You know, a grant deadline, a something here, a something there. And what if a year from now, they have more students or we have more people in town? It, it's just a good thing for Alamosa, and I think, let it be, and Mr. Romero can, can do his business. It's a good thing.
Thank you, Ruthie. Kristi Goddard?
Hi, my name is Kristi Goddard. I am also on the board of directors for Children's Garden, but I'm coming here today to speak to you as a parent for a child who is all, one of these 24 that will be affected. Unfortunately, my child doesn't necessarily fall within the risk factors of the lack of education, that type of stuff. My husband and I are fortunate enough to be very well-educated. As such, we notice in our child the need for structured academic preschool at his age. And if he is not able to attend preschool this year at Children's Garden, we are actually looking to take our school dollars outside of this community because I need him to have that structured community involvement in a school. He's an only child, so we need the socialization that not only preschool, but the daycare involves. And I was on a waiting list for over a year to get into Children's Garden. And so I don't want to have to try and transition him again into another school, into another city, because I can't bring him here. And this is where our home is. This is where we would like to stay involved. So that's just kind of my thought process right now, is trying to find good education and being able to expose my child to that. And unfortunately, he will be affected as one of the 24 that will not have that opportunity if you guys do not look at approving this decision today.
Thank you, Kristi.
Thank you.
Counselor Stefano?
I have another question. How, what are the ages of these children that are going to go to the...
They're three and four years of old age.
Three and four?
Uh huh.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Kristi. And of course, we will be dealing with this issue as business brought forward by city staff this evening. Do we have any follow-up, staff?
No, no, sir.
Okay. Thank you. And so we will now move on to Consent Calendar A. The Consent Calendar allows multiple actions with one motion. Consent Calendar A contains routine items which have been recommended for action by staff or advisory boards. Council may remove a consent calendar item for separate consideration. We have three items this evening. The approval of the minutes for the meeting of August 3, 2016. We'll receive the July 2016 monthly reports, and we will receive the July 16 expenditure reports. Counselor Daniel?
Mayor, I motion that we approve Consent Calendar A.
I second.
Got a motion second to approve Consent Calendar A? Is there any further discussion? Counselor Gregel?
Oh, I'm sorry, no.
Oh, okay. Now, start voting, please.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. We will now move on to regular business, presentations from outside agencies. Mr. Jim Polton, Poles Poston, I'm sorry, Jim, dealing with locomotive 169. Presentation regarding bunking with B1 scheduled for mid-September. Thank you for being here, sir.
Okay, it's good to address the council again and all the members of the city of Alamosa and their representatives and the people as well. I do have a copy for the newspaper.
Okay.
The lady's smiling at us. Just a brief update on what we've accomplished over the summertime. At the beginning of this month, the gentleman from Historic Railway Preservation came down from Washington State and did some more woodwork on the cab. They were only able to stay for about half, three-quarters of a day because they had to go to Nebraska, of all places. Ellen, to my left, has worked on the yard limit sign with a couple of our youth volunteers and a third youth volunteer that we've had. Her mom is in the audience, Lori Williams, Ashley Williams, and Chiara... Lori Williams, Ashley Williams, and Ciara, Sierra, and Shadoni actually quarterbacked the idea of having this bunking with the B1. Why don't we do something with the business car? Something that will line up what we're trying to accomplish with the preservation and restoration of the locomotive and the business car with getting the word out that, yes, Alamosa's got a historic train right in our middle. So, number one, we respect that the pavilion is the property of the city, and the train does belong to the Alamosa Chamber, the Alamosa County Economic Development Council. So what we are looking for is for permission from these two entities to proceed with our efforts. We're not asking for money. We're just asking for permission. Randy Wright, in a late-breaking email, says he will approve the project pending the insurance coverage, assuring that we've got that available for both the EDC and for the liability for this event. And everything else is going to be operated in-house. As you can see from the flyers, we do have the event scheduled for September 24th and 25th. We've got the week prior to that as a contingency, depending on when people are available. We don't want to be too close to the Early Iron event. We'd kind of like to stand on our own. We've met a lot of people visiting the train from all over the state, all over the country, and indeed, all around the world. But a lot of people that grew up with the train, being able to play on it before City Hall was built, before the library was built, they say, "We don't have access to the train anymore." But we look at this bunking with the B1 as a great opportunity to swap railroad stories, learn a little bit about the history of the valley, how the railroad played a huge part in the agriculture and the settling of the West. So, if, if you have any questions, feel free to ask. Feel free to visit. We're open the first Saturday of the, of the month, September 3, in concert with the Early Iron event. We will have the pavilion open, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jim. Counselor Hensley.
So I see, obviously, the idea of 10 and above, that type of thing. Are you looking, do you sort of foresee this being something that's really gonna appeal to children? Or do you see it as for adults too, or a combination?
A combination. If you've got an interest in the history of the valley, if you've got an interest in the railroads, you're, you're more than welcome. We did set a minimum age of 10, because we don't want to be a babysitting service.
Right.
But the, the younger ladies that are, that are kind of ramrodding this and got us older folks, I'm speaking for myself, got us older folks off the dime, are 11 and 12 years old. And that's another facet that we'd like to include. Let's, we've got a tremendous history here in the valley. And let's cultivate that, that interest, that passion with the younger people. And this is one, one path of doing so.
So can the, the kids go without their parents? Or are you encouraging it with their parents? Is this more of a family thing, or?
If, if they're, if they're between the ages of, or inclusive, the ages of 10 to 15, we'd like to have a paying adult with them. But if they're proving themselves to be responsible, or somebody else is willing, and it's probably gonna be me, to step up and, and watch out for the youth, I, I think it's a great opportunity. The prices that you see on the handout are tentative. We still need to get the prices of the porta potty, the, the food that we want to serve. So that's gonna have an effect on the final result. But first of all, we wanted to get the approval of the, of the Alamosa City Council and of the Economic Development Council before we proceeded any farther. We can proceed with a few things. We could do a lot of research. But if you guys say no, well, then, then we go to a Plan B. We'll talk about Santa Claus next time.
Mayor, I think council still has some questions and some things that, to discuss. Should you be interested in approving this? You may want to do it with the caveat to allow staff a little bit of time to process it as well. So the, if, if you're interested in approving it, you could do something to the effect of approving the concept with maybe some of the details to, to be finalized. I know our city attorney hasn't reviewed this, or those types of things. But obviously, if council is, is in support of the concept, we would do everything to try to make it possible. So just, just a bit of a comment there.
Thank you, Heather. I think that's an important step for us to consider as well. Counselor Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm super excited about this, so I think that that is really cool. But I did have the same question that Heather just addressed, so I appreciate that. And I'm really excited about the creativity of the youth and that they brought you guys along, rather than you trying to drag them along to the train. So that's, that's very, very neat. But I appreciated Heather's comment, and that's primarily what my question was going to be.
Counselor Gregel.
Yes, Jim, so there's a cart already there where people could sleep in, or how does this work?
Because of the historical aspect of the business car B1 and the locomotive, we're actually going to set up cots outside. We got that beautiful roof on the pavilion and.
Well, it's outside where the, the cots are gonna be set up.
I'm sorry?
Outside is where people would be sleeping at?
Outside the train, but underneath the roof of the pavilion. They would be inside. We would lock down at 7 o'clock in the evening, and we would open up at 7 o'clock Sunday morning.
And you're, maximum 30 people is all you can provide for?
We did a survey, or we, we took a look at the area we had available, and we believe that by setting up the sleeping arrangements on the City Hall side of the train as opposed to all the traffic that's going over the bridge. And it's our first time at it. If we have overflow, then, well, we hope we brought, we hope people brought their sleeping bags and their mattress pads for. We're, we're looking to limit it to 30, however, since this is our first go-around.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Counselor Coleman.
Thank you, Mayor. Jim, I just want to thank you for every year you come up here and you give us an update. And I really appreciate your consistency with keeping us updated on what's going on with the locomotive. I just want to ask you, have you shared this idea with many people in the community? And if so, what kind of feedback are you getting so far?
As, as I mentioned, the visitors that we have to the pavilion, a lot of folks that grew up here in Alamosa and played on the train when they had access to it, they, they rant and they rave, and they, they love the design inside the B1. They love looking at the locomotive. We have the hard hats available for somebody that wants to go underneath an actual operating, well, what has the potential to be an operating steam locomotive. And, you know, across the board, I believe the support has been there. We just need to get the word out in the streets, which this bunking with the B1 is another conduit, along with the newsletter. During our first volunteer week in May, when it was a little brisk and a little chilly to be outside the train, Ellen and I either emailed or telephoned a number of people that were on our list. And out of 140 people, we got about 25 to 30 people saying, "Yes, keep us updated." "Yes, we want the newsletter." "Yes, we will send you money," which was unsolicited but appreciated, all at the same time.
Okay, well, I know you have to be with staff and make sure everything is in compliance and everything, and looking forward to having an opportunity to review it when it comes across council. So thank you so very much.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you. And Evelyn, do you have anything to say?
Two of our junior volunteers started volunteering on their own at about the age of eight. They would just show up and start helping with the painting, the sweeping, the vacuuming. And they're now a couple of the 12-year-olds that are on our list. So there is interest out there if we can get, you know, get the word out more.
Thank you, Evelyn. Counselor Stefano.
Jim, the business car, will that be used in this?
Strictly for the tours. The actual sleeping arrangements will be outside the train. There won't be anybody sleeping in the business car B1 or in the cab of the locomotive. If somebody really, really wants to, we can probably make arrangements where they can sleep on the traffic side of the train. But we'll, we'll try to discourage that. Present company accepted. You guys can sleep where you want.
Thank you, Jim.
You're welcome.
Counselor Gregel.
Let me see if I understand. In the motion, we can make a motion and send it over to staff attorney to, to review it. And if it's, if it's okay, then they can proceed, because they're looking like at September?
And we, we can move quickly on it, and it could be that there really isn't anything that, that needs to be changed. But I just think a quick review by our city attorney would, would probably be good. So if your motion is that council is in support of this and to have staff work on reviewing it, that it could be that simple.
That's a good motion. I'll make that.
I second it. I second it.
We have a motion, a, a good motion and a second to basically allow the approval of this conditioned on staff's recommendations. And so is there a, a motion, a second? Is there any further discussion? If not, start voting, please. Shell?
The motion passed unanimously.
Thank you, Jim and Evelyn.
Well, you can slide it to be one of the first 30. If we have 100 people, we'll make room.
Are you gonna cook?
Thank you. We'll move on to business brought forward by city staff, Public Works. Thank you, Pat.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, council. As you're aware of, the Planning Commission, with a 4 to 1 vote, has passed a recommendation for denial of the request of the Early Childhood Council of the San Luis Valley for a permitted use by special review to allow a daycare facility in a residential medium zoning district. This recommendation was based on concerns of a potential neighboring competing business owner who cited concerns of parking and lack of drop-off space, a potential water connection between his building and the building owned by the Early Childhood Council, and concerns about the temporary aspect of the request. Staff, however, based on information obtained during the Rural Philanthropy Days, the DOLA Small Communities Workshop, numerous academic studies, and the public outreach portion of the Comprehensive Plan Update originally, and still recommends approval. Since the Planning Commission meeting, we have been able to ask Public Works staff about the potential water connection between the two buildings. To everybody's knowledge, this, this connection does not exist. Also, as addressed in the staff recommendation to the Planning Commission, between eastbound 8th Street, southbound Ross Avenue, westbound 9th Street, northbound Bell, and the very well-maintained alley adjacent to the proposed facility, there should be adequate room for the dropping off and picking up of 12 students in the morning and 12 in the afternoon. Staff also feels that the proximity of Zapata Park with its new Kaboom playground makes us a perfect location for the requested use. Often referred to by economists as the invisible driver or the linchpin for the creation and maintenance of a vital and competitive economy, adequate and affordable childcare is a common point of discussion among economic developers, employers and potential employees, university students and working parents. Employers require individuals with strong cognitive communications and social and emotional skills. And science tells us that the most critical period for the initial development of these traits occurs in the early years of life, building a strong foundation for success in school, relationships, and future jobs. To encourage and maximize this development, children need access to high-quality and affordable learning environments. And with its state certifications and long operational history in the community, this facility seems to be exactly that kind of environment. Childcare also has three distinct roles in our local economy. First, it is the only source of early, early care and education for many of our children, preparing them for future success in school and work. Second, it provides a critical support network for parents and their employers. It has been estimated that 65% of parents' work schedules are affected by childcare challenges more than three times a year, and these challenges cost American employers over $3 billion annually. And third, childcare is a viable local industry in its own right, being responsible for bringing an estimated $1 million in outside funding to the community each year and creating over 50 local jobs. This proposed use will help to stimulate economic activity throughout the local economy.
Thank you, Pat. Counsel? Counsel Gregel.
I guess, one of the concerns I have, and this is probably the first time I, that I can remember, is that when a planning commission goes against something and staff goes for it, is there enough information being given out to planning commission so they can make a, a, a good decision on, on stuff like this, Pat? Or what, what is it? Because, you know, exactly what you told us tonight, was that given to the planning commission so they could at least, you know, weigh it? And then also, maybe the special permitted use, there's, there's certain parameters in special permitted use that should be applied to certain things. And I think this kind of fits that special permitted use. And I don't know, I don't know, I guess what I'm trying to get at is, are we giving the right information to the planning commission?
In all honesty, until the hearing happens, we really have no idea what direction to go from, from a staff position. I had, I had no idea that the neighbor who had been approved for 70 children was going to show up and make, make loud concerns about the traffic problems that are gonna be caused by 12. So, you know, there's, there's things that I can't anticipate. So no, this presentation that you just heard from me was not provided to planning commission.
I think, you know, part of this is, is a, is a learning opportunity as well in regards to, it seems somewhat of a, as a non-issue, fairly straightforward, filling a very strong need in the community. And we did not anticipate that, that there would be resistance from the neighborhood. And there was apparently significant conversations that occurred prior to the meeting that was a bit of a surprise. And so sometimes that happens, and it's something that we can use as something to work with, with P&amp;Z in regards to, when you read the, the information provided by the city attorney, to help them understand why it's better to stay within those parameters. Especially as a planning group compared to council, where sometimes your role is to bring a little bit more of those political considerations into play. Their role really is not. And so we're, we're looking at this as a good learning opportunity as well.
Yes, because I, like I said, they need to have the right material so they can make it a real, a, a good decision, you know? I think this decision they made, and I'm sure they're looking at it now and saying, "Well, what do we do?" You know? Because it's a, it's something that's needed out there. And I think if they'd had the right information, regardless, if you have one person coming out there and, and objecting who is writing acts, you still weigh it out, and you still look at what puts it allowed in special permitted use. And if it fits, it fits, you know, regardless of competition.
Well, the permitted use by, by its nature is, it's an equity choice by, by the commission and by the, by the city council. It, it's there to consider uses that are not necessarily allowed by the zoning code. So, you know, until that first consideration is made, all we can do is try to assume what those concerns are gonna be and try to, try to address them before they happen. And like Heather said, this was, I anticipated this being a, being a very simple, everyday kind of request, and it certainly was not.
Thank you very much, Pat. Counselor Vehill.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, to Heather, you said that there was, prior to the meeting, the P&amp;Z meeting, there was resistance and discussions from the community. Can you elaborate on that? And, and if, if there is resistance from the immediate surrounding neighborhood, they should be here tonight, and they're not. I see, I see, I see a room full of people who are for this. And, and I hate that it came to this point. This is, this is a no-brainer, council. No-brainer.
So it was one individual who is, you recently approved the special use permit to open a daycare facility, which is a very good project. There's still ways to go before that can open. That individual, our impression is, is probably contacted some of the P&amp;Z members ahead of time, shared his concerns. He was at the meeting, as was appropriate during the public hearing, and, and shared his concerns at ti- that time as well. I think upon reflection, he then contacted Pat to indicate that he's no longer in opposition of it, and has changed his, his opinion. Unfortunately, that was after the P&amp;Z meeting, and the ball was, was already rolling. The, the P&amp;Z had already voted, and it was important to make sure that, that council understood the full story and, and that type of stuff. So that individual's changed his mind. And to my knowledge, does that answer your question?
That absolutely answers my question. And I just like to offer one more comment, and I think we're all on the same page up here, but in the minutes of the P&amp;Z meeting, there was some discussion, and one of the. and one of the ladies up here talked about competition. It's not about competition, it's about, and this is what we talk about in center. I'm an educator up there, and we talk about our number one focus should be on kids. And again, this is a no brainer, and I think we should allow this to happen.
Counsel Daniel?
Thank you, mayor. I just wanted to let council know that I do have a conflict of interest in this vote, so I will be abstaining from the vote. I am the chair of the Children's Garden Board. I'm the chair of the Children's Garden Board.
Thank you, Counsel Daniel, for letting us know that. Counsel Hensley?
So I echo what Counsel ViHill says, and that this is a no brainer. I will, just like some of the people who came and gave their opinion, I'll put my grandma hat on. And my granddaughter Marley went to Children's Garden, and she wouldn't be where she's at. She's getting ready to start first grade. And I have my granddaughter Lexi, who's two, and I can only imagine if this was happening while she was three, because she is so ready for preschool as well. And so I can't imagine where she'd be if she didn't have preschool. And so just like everybody else putting their hat on as the parent, we need to have this, and there's no, in my mind, there's no question about it.
Counsel Stefano?
I also agree with Mrs. Hensley and Jan. It is a great thing for our community in that area. The Kaboom is an excellent playground forum out there. I think it's going to be, I think it's a positive thing, and I think I agree, it's a no brainer.
Counsel, sorry. Hold on, no, no, no. Counsel Gregel, this is in your ward, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I just wanted to ask you that question.
No, no, that's correct. And I was going to make a comment after that. Yeah, this is in my ward, and all we want is the safety of our kids and the education, as Mr. ViHill says, you know? And as long as those two items are being taken care of, you know, there is, boy, there is a lot of need for daycare, you know, in these programs. So I definitely, you know, I agree with the comments Mr. ViHill's made, and him being an educator and being in this field is, you know, it's strong. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel ViHill?
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, Mr. Gregel, for the backing. So with that, I move that we approve the request of the Early Childhood Council of the San Luis Valles application for permitted use by special review to allow a daycare facility, use Group C three, and a residential medium zoning district.
I second.
I've got a motion and a second for approval. Is there any further discussion? I, okay, absolutely. Counsel Coleman, you go right ahead, and then I'll make my comment.
Oh, I yield to you, mayor.
All right.
I want to make some comments too.
Well, we've got three comments. Colorado is suffering greatly in the educational system. I know we have dropped from, I can't remember, I think it was like fourteen to number forty nationally. Our children are suffering from a two thousand dollar deficit per pupil below the national average in education, educational funding. And anything that we can do to alleviate that problem for our children and for ourselves, I think, is worth the effort. This is a very small step forward in doing that. And so that's my comment there. Counselor Coleman?
Thank you, mayor. Very good comments. In addition to what the mayor said, I just want the audience and the people who came up and made comments, and the people who were in the audience who talked with us before the meeting, to let you know that your voices matter. In small town politics, your little voices make a huge difference in the lives of others. Tonight, your voices are going to make a huge difference in the difference of twenty-four different families. Hopefully, if council passes this in order for us to move forward. One thing that I wanted to make mention of, in addition to the importance of the children's safety and their education, also childcare and early learning programs like this is very important to our economy. If we were to displace those twenty-four families from having an opportunity for those students to get the proper education that they need, not only will it affect those families, but it has a huge effect on the preschool teachers who are sitting over there today. They would run the risk of losing their jobs for the most part. So economically, moving forward with this in a positive light is going to be beneficial not only to the children, not only to the families, but also to our economy as well. So thank you for coming out tonight. Thank you for letting your voices be heard.
Counsel Gregel?
Good comments, Ty. I too would like to thank the people that came tonight and taking time to come up and sharing your positions and stuff like this. Our kids are very, very important to us, and anything we, as a council and a community, can do to help our kids and have their safety is very, very important. So once again, thank you very much for coming down.
Further discussion? Start voting, please. Do I have one abstention? That's Christina. Michelle?
The motion carried six to one with Counselor Daniel abstaining.
Thank you. We will now move on to finance. We have Resolution Number thirteen dash twenty sixteen, a resolution making supplemental appropriations and authorizing expenditures in excess of amounts budgeted for the City of Alamosa in ordinance nineteen twenty fifteen in regards to the twenty sixteen budget and also known as the second budget amendment. Thank you, Amanda.
Counsel, the amendment you have in front of you tonight affects only the general fund, and it's pretty straightforward. It incorporates items that council has already approved. So we are incorporating the revenue that the IGA with Montavista will bring in as well as the offsetting expenses. We are bringing in additional revenue from the Training Foundation that offsets some of the expenses that we have in our police operations, as well as bringing in, and we've brought in an additional ten thousand dollars in curb and gutter contract services. And this isn't necessarily a carryover for twenty fifteen, but we did not do the program in twenty fifteen. So because of not doing that, we've had more projects this year, so we have additional income in that line. We also are bringing in the approved FTE for fleet maintenance, so that is being allocated with this budget amendment. And we are also reallocating funds that were, vehicles we sold at the Police Department last year, those, they repurchased used vehicles this year, so we're reallocating those funds for them to be able to use.
Thank you, Amanda. Counsel, we have any questions for Amanda or comments? Counsel Gregel?
I had one, the FTE for forty-one thousand four hundred, we did hire somebody already for that?
Yes, we did. I think there was a, I'll let Heather.
Because I knew that they had put the application up, but I didn't know.
Yes, we were able to advertise and hire for that, but unfortunately, about a few weeks after that, our other person was stolen away for better pay. So they went through a process of filling that. So, Pat, are we fully backstaffed now? We have managed to process all of that and get fully staffed again.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Stefano?
I just have a question, Amanda. On the used fleet and account for money, does the fleet already been sold?
Yes. The fleet's already been sold, we already have the revenue monies. It's just reallocating those into an expense.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Counsel Gregel?
If there's no further questions, I'll make the motion to approve Resolution Number thirteen dash twenty sixteen.
I'll second.
I've got a motion and a second on Resolution Number thirteen twenty sixteen. Is there any further discussion? None, start voting, please. Michelle? Are we missing one? And we have one abstention? No. Michelle?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, counsel. Let me get back in my screen. The next thing we have is committee reports. Does anyone have a committee report? Counsel ViHill?
Thank you, mayor. Yes, last Tuesday, May tenth, I was able to attend my first Historic Preservation Advisory Committee meeting. Mr. Simring's in the audience, and he did a really good job. I learned a lot. A couple of highlights from that meeting were that they approved Chris Quintana as a member of the board. They also talked about a survey they did of older properties on, right outside our building here, State Street going east, and talked to a few of the homeowners about maybe possibly getting on the list, the Historic Preservation List. And they came up, they had a flyer, what it can do for your property value, that type of stuff. So it was really impressive what they're doing. And today, if you saw in the newspaper, they just gave a plaque of Historic Preservation significance to the house right here, the Carver House. And Mr. Coleman was in the picture, and Mr. Simring were in the picture, and they did a really good job of that. So our next meeting is in a few months, and we also talked about just the procedures and what they want to do. Like they want to get more into gear with doing stuff on a regular basis, as well as looking for a new member, as one person was not able, is no longer able to be on this board due to health concerns. Also, tomorrow, I will be attending a meeting with Julie Mordecai and the group who are in charge of the Rio Grande Farm Park. I was asked to be a liaison on that, and I will give you an update on that in a couple of weeks.
Thank you, Counsel ViHill. Anyone else? I attend the rec board meeting, but I think Heinz is in the back, and he probably has a whole lot more information. So if it's all right with him, I'll just defer to him during staff announcements. But is there anyone else here? Heather?
Thank you, mayor. Before Heinz comes up, or if you want to come up, and we'll just tag team it. Next week, we're going to have a lot of activity for the comprehensive planning in regards to public outreach, just want to make everyone aware of that. We felt we had not done a good enough job getting input from some of our younger population. So next Wednesday, we will be partnering with the Boys and Girls Club and visiting them and asking them some questions on what they would want Alamosa to look like and what they like, what they don't, those types of things. So I'm excited about that and to reach a different population with the help of the Boys and Girls Club. That night on the twenty-fourth, we will also be having a community meeting. We're trying to do it as a more informal location. We're going to do it at Zapata Park. We're going to be grilling some stuff. We will have people, staff there to watch kids, to try to help people with families be able to attend and not have to worry about getting a sitter in order to attend a boring city meeting that can sometimes be a detractor. So we will have that. We will also have an interpreter on there to try to encourage some of our Spanish speaking residents to attend and provide some input. So we wanted it to be a little more informal, have it be in a more casual environment with some of the resources that will make it easier for families and more diversity to attend the meeting. So that will be Wednesday, the twenty-fourth. We started promoting that just today, so hopefully you'll be seeing a lot more of that, and hopefully we will get a good turnout. The other part that's going on next week in regards to the Comprehensive Plan is they're really digging deep into the focus on the downtown. So the consultant will actually be walking the downtown again, but this time they'll be talking to business owners and property owners. They are also going to have two business forums where anyone, not just someone from the downtown, but anyone can come. One will be on the twenty-fifth, which is Thursday at noon, and then also that Thursday at six PM, and food will be provided at both. And, but the focus is going to be more on the downtown and what would people like to see and what's working, what's not, those types of things. So there's going to be a lot of activity going on next week in regards to the comp plan and public outreach. I have a few other items, but I don't want to make Heinz stand too long, so I'll let him, I'll let him do his update before I finish.
Heather, if you don't mind, real quick, on the comp plan meeting on Wednesday, the twenty-fourth, what times are they going to be? You had one with the Boys and Girls Club, and then another one with the community at Zapata Park?
Yes, the Boys and Girls Club will be at ten AM, and the Zapata Park Community Meeting will be at six PM. Thank you. Yes, August, next week. Well, so staff will not be at the Zapata Park. The consultant will be running that entirely. The school starts back on the twenty-fifth. We've coordinated, we've got it covered.
Okay, would you?
Thank you.
If possible, could you send us out an email with those corrected, those dates, so that we know for sure?
Yeah, those are the dates, and they've been coordinated, and we'll send you an email.
All right, thank you, Heather. Mr. Heinz, thank you for being here, sir.
You betcha. Just up some upcoming events. First off, just one hit, we've got our farmers market every Saturday in the parking lot out there. Also on Saturday, we've got the block party, and it stands for SARS. And SARS is a volunteer nonprofit public service organization dedicated to providing search and rescue services and education so that others may live. And they're telling that they'll have a bear garden there, fifty percent of the sales will go to this organization. On Sunday, Alma, Sunday's at six, returns to Cole Park, and this Sunday we'll have the SLV Big Band performing. Next week, on August twenty-fifth through the twenty-eighth, it's free, free days at the National Park, so you can get in free to the sand dunes on those days. And also coming up on Labor Day weekend will be the Thirty-Sixth Annual Early Ireland Festival. So we're looking forward to that. Just an update on trees. We've parked one head and completed the last eleven plantings. We put three in the Friends Park, three in Carroll, three in Cole, and two at Boyd. Rec Board went very well. We had the golf club representatives at the board. We're looking at a joint session with the Rec Board and Golf Club and Council on August the thirty-first, Wednesday night, six PM, I do believe. So they've got some things going on at the club, to kind of give a review of what's going on at the Golf Club and upcoming payments and their financial status for the rest of the year. So that'll be an interesting work session.
We are trying to help build that connection between the Golf Board and the Rec Board, because really golf is part of recreation, and since the Rec Board is an advisory board for council that advises on capital projects, spending, priorities, those types of things, we wanted to make sure that we're building that relationship and having that communication be a little bit stronger. And I know everyone's going to be disappointed that the thirty-first is no longer the training and some of the other items that have been pushed around, that you'll be very sad. But it's fairly timely to have this work session in regards to the Golf Board. So that will be the thirty-first, and when Holly returns, she'll send that updated information.
Thank you, Heather. Is that it, Heinz?
That's it.
Didn't we change the date for the Rec Board meetings?
That's true, yes. They're now going to be, because it has some scheduling conflicts among the members, the new date is now the second Tuesday instead of the second Thursday, and it'll still be at eleven-thirty at the Rec Center. And it's, the next one will be October, because we meet every two months.
Thank you, Heinz. Heather?
So I just have a few more, and I know you guys still have a few parts of your meeting left, so I'll try to make this fast. I believe several council members have been contacted by Ms. Ortega. She's had several issues that she's experiencing at her home. Some of it is some neighboring properties that are not maintaining their weeds and some concerns about some other properties about potential drug activity or other nuisance behaviors. So that information has been turned over to the Police Department. When it is private property like that, it's actually fairly straightforward for staff to address if it's a nuisance and If it's a nuisance and qualifies, we put them into the process to try to get it corrected. One of her other concerns, which unfortunately is something we seem to face every year, is working on the weeds with the railroad. And so as she pointed out, across the street, the weeds on the railroad property are getting high again. And so they do have a new general manager. His name is Brett Wallace. Matt Abbey introduced me to him a few weeks ago. Seems, you know, like a very good person and wants to continue the partnership. I know the chief has been able to meet with him, I believe either yesterday or today, to continue those discussions, make introductions, and we'll be continuing those discussions with them on the weeds. Once I know anything further, I'll let council know, and obviously, we also have Ms. Ortega's phone number, and we'll keep her in the loop on the status of that as well. Two other things. We did go ahead and sign off on the grant to receive monies to look at electronic ticketing. There's still a lot that we want to flush out, but from talking to other communities, it looks promising enough that we did not want to pass this up. And so it's something that as we do more research, and before we actually make any purchases, we'll obviously be making a presentation to council. But as they're doing that research and asking questions, you might hear something. So I just want to make sure you're not surprised. We are seriously looking into e-ticketing. It can streamline our processes, make it go paperless, help the officers, and the agencies that have gone to it have spoken very highly of it. At the same time, we want to make sure we're not creating a burden in another part of our organization. So we're going to be evaluating that, and Dwayne's people, the chief's people, were very good at getting grants, so it will be very helpful. Lastly, most of you were able to attend the county meeting in regards to the jail population and the preliminary discussion of if they were going to take municipal offenders or not. I think we are very happy that the sheriffs decided at this point in time to continue accepting it. I think I just want to take this opportunity to make sure that the information's very clear in regards to the numbers that are purely municipal offenders. I think even though we tried to provide some of that information, there was a lot of discussion, and maybe there could be some confusion surrounding it. Last year, we only had seven, and that's municipal only. Now, they were in there a lot of different times, but it was seven. And so when we talk about a population getting up towards a hundred and sixty, seven's not a driving force for that. And, you know, I know the sheriff mentioned that they'll continue to monitor it, and if it goes up again, they may have to then end services. And obviously, the commissioners voted to give the sheriff that discretion. So, you know, that language is still a little scary for us. We want to make sure that they're able to track exactly why the offenders are in there, and, you know, considering if he thinks going up is fifteen, we may never meet that, and we might be good. But if there's confusion on why the offenders are in there, and if it's purely municipal, that could create some conflict, and we really want to avoid that. I know the chief is working with them closely, and, you know, we're trying to help in many different ways, such as providing our officers to allow them to work while they're filling some of their positions and looking at other partnership opportunities. The other message we wanted to make sure was clear is we understand the jail situation, significantly understand it, which is why we've done the grants, which is why we're working with our municipal judge for alternate sentencing and those types of things. So hopefully, we can take our seven down to maybe just one or two, but we would hate for those two to get cut off because there's a hundred and fifty-eight coming from somewhere else, and maybe those same steps aren't being done. So just wanted to, you know, make sure that that information was clear. We're very grateful that, at this point in time, they're still helping us and taking those inmates. And it just, when you look at our continuum of when they go through the system, if you take off that end of it, which is jail, it really can undercut the rest of it. And while it may only undercut seven, it could impact some of the other ones that are in the system as well, and make it less scary for them to not have the threat of jail out there. So right now, we're doing okay, but, you know, there's still a little nervousness for us, because it wasn't necessarily a hundred percent closed, the situation. So I just wanted to make sure that information was clear and shared with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Any comments? You know, we have to have checks and balances when it comes to punishment, and it's just one of those things where, whether you live in the city or in the county, if you're a city resident or a municipal offender, you know, we as a city basically pay twice to have our municipal folks in jail, I think. I mean, that's the way I see it. I don't know, maybe I'm seeing things the wrong way. Am I seeing things twistedly?
Well, it's not necessarily twice, but it is a very good point that you're making in that the estimates, the cost to the county to house inmates is at forty-some dollars. The city pays sixty-some dollars, and so we're more than covering our costs. Now, we are taking up beds, and when you have an overcrowding issue, that is, that's an issue, and we don't want to downplay that. But at the same time, we do fully cover our costs for the housing of our inmates.
And I think that's only fair, probably more than fair. Anyway, Counselor Gregel.
One comment I'd like to make is that the fact that Sheriff Jackson is willing to work, and our chief, they created this, it hasn't happened in a long time, you know, and these efforts, them working together with the community is a big plus, you know. So it's something that, you know, we'll continue working at it, and we still should try to find other ways of maybe not sending them to jail, maybe an ankle bracelet or some kind of thing, something, you know. But I just wanted to make sure that we understand that the relationship between both departments is great, and we really appreciate that.
Counselor Gregel, I totally agree with you, and I do respect our chief and our sheriff working together on this issue, as well as staff. We as a community need to work together on this thing. We all know that the jail has been inadequate for many, many years, and I think our community realizes that as well. Taking the hard decision and/or looking at the hard decision and finding out what we're going to do about it is an issue that I think really all of us have to put our shoulder to that wheel and say, we need to make sure that a lot of these folks are housed properly, and we don't have to send them out, and the county doesn't have to foot the bill for sending them out. But anyway, all right. Any more council comment? I mean, I'm sorry, staff announcements? No more? Okay, we'll move on to council comment then. Counselor V. Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Just two quick things. I want to thank Ms. Brooks and Ms. Thomas and Mr. Gregel and Mr. Coleman for working with Ms. Ortega on these issues with the weeds and that, because they are like, it's like a jungle back there. But also want to congratulate Boris Berian, who ran the eight-hundred-meter dash in the Olympics. He went to Adam State. Also, Jürgen Thiemann and Sanayna Wahi, who ran for Suriname. They go to Adam State as well. They ran the hundred-meter dash, and they were also in the Olympics, so I think that's really cool. Congratulations to them.
I almost thought you were going to congratulate Liz on her appointment to the Colorado Municipal League Executive Board. Congratulations, Counselor Hensley.
Congratulations, absolutely. That's Counselor Coleman.
Well, Heather just beat me to the punch, but congratulations, and I'm quite sure all the rest of council are proud of you and really happy to see you do this in your freshman year as a council person. Good job.
Very good. I think it's really important to be able to rub shoulders with Sam Mamet, you know, he's really a neat individual. I would be remiss in not mentioning that our attorney today is Mr. Gordon Bosa. Thank you for being here, sir. Really appreciate your presence. And, thank you. Welcome. And I think one of the things that I wanted to mention was I know that many of us or some of us have been looking at the issue of council stipend compensation, and I know we really haven't had an opportunity to discuss it. I don't know if council wants to discuss it next meeting. It's up to council, but if there's a consensus, we can at least put it on the agenda to discuss. Counselor Gregel.
I guess my only comment is, if we were to put together some kind of question, how much time do we have? And I don't know, that's probably a question for Holly, but she's not here tonight.
It has to be drafted and posted when we post the agenda for the next meeting, which is next week. Or you might have a little bit more time, but we definitely have the IGA that's going forward, and I think it's just into the beginning of September that you have for the wording of the petition. But we can get that to you. It has to happen very quickly if it's something council wanted to consider.
I would like to look at something. I'd like to look at maybe what other municipalities are doing as far as compensation, and maybe not even compensation. I know Durango is doing something different and has changed their charter, maybe doing something along that line instead of compensation.
Counselor V. Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, one more thing, just for next week, I know we're talking about marijuana, and I know a lot of us up here had concerns about timelines and what would happen and language for the ballot and that type of stuff. So just, it would behoove us if we really do our own research and get as much information as we can, so that we can have productive meeting next week.
And in regards to the language, prior to leaving, the city attorney did prepare the language, should you want to do all the different possibilities. And so you have everything at your fingertips once the agenda's posted in regards to that wording. And there is also information, I believe he sent, in regards to what other cities have done and not done, but, you know, clearly, if you want to do more research. But that will be part of the agenda packet and will be available to the public as well when that's posted. And so you will be able to pick and choose on any of those items in regards to wording. So we're not limiting that upfront. It will be up there for you guys to pick from.
Thank you, Heather. Counsel, we have the need for an executive session?
So, I'm sorry, Mayor. Did you want an agenda item at the next regular meeting for council compensation? Or I don't know if that was brought to the conclusion.
Well, I guess we didn't really answer that, but...
I guess, my question is, how much time do we have? If we need to put it on, I'd like to see, have some discussion on it.
If I recall from our work session on marijuana, I think we have to have the language cemented by September eighth.
That's what I was thinking, too, sir.
So we do have time then?
We have time? If there's a consensus here, we can...
I would like to explore it and have a discussion on it.
Well, I think, if I may, Heather, I think the language would have to be approved through the first and second reading by September eighth.
So there's a time crunch, but it's not a second and third. It is a resolution, so you could approve that the seventh. But the problem is, is we post the agenda on the second, which means staff's going to have to go through the trouble of drafting something that we're not sure what you want us to draft, and we're not sure if there's enough votes for you guys to do it. So I guess, I guess the concept of how much do you want staff to spin their wills if you have the votes or don't have the votes comes into question. And if we don't do it until the seventh, you have to add it to one of your work sessions, potentially on the twenty-fourth or the thirty-first, to even give staff direction on what you want to look at doing in order to draft the language.
So this evening, do you want a consensus, or do you want a motion? What do you want in order to get that direction?
I think just a, you know, just a consensus on if there's interest in putting something before the voters in relation to council compensation.
Is there a consensus? Raise your right arm if there's a consensus.
So Mr. Stefano has had a raised arm? No. Okay, so there's three. So I would say no?
No.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Counsel. We have a need for an executive session pursuant to CRS twenty-four, and I will entertain a motion on that executive session.
Mayor, I so moved that we move into executive session pursuant to Colorado Revised Statute twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four F for personnel matters, the evaluation of the city manager and city attorney.
Second. Got a motion, a second on the executive session. Any further discussion? None, start voting, please.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. And after our executive session, we will move into our regular session, and no further business will be discussed. Thank you.